About LGR on the 18th of November. Thank you all for being here. Denise, you're online. Are we, are we being streamed? Everything up and running? So that's good. So just remind you that if you're not, if you are watching in, try and stay muted and don't put your camera on until you're speaking. Make sure all of us that we put our mics on to speak into that so that people who are streaming can hear it. I think that's about it there. So agenda item one apologies. We have apologies from Denise, who although she is joining us online. And Andrew and Michael can't join us because they're at the County Council Network Conference. But some of us also were at, but we're here. But right declarations of interest. Members, I think Maria, would you like to just sort of give an explanation as to particularly around the sort of twin hatters?
Sorry, Leader, fumbling with my papers. So I provided advice to full council and very similar self advice to yourselves. So you have a dispensation in relation, the general dispensation in relation to disclose or peculiar interests which I've granted to all members. I would refer our twin haters specifically, reminding you around the localism act. Councillors may express a view and campaign and issues about automatically being deemed to have been predetermined by their position. However, it is essential that all members approach this matter with an open mind and are ready to consider and participate in the debate for voting. And I think that's about as much I need to say to you. I have all provided you all with written advice as well.
Thank you very much, Maria. So any other interests that, that members may miss to declare? Well, no, I mean, you don't have to because Maria has given us dispensation. So there's no need to declare that you're a double hatter or a twin hatter.
So Leader, we have recorded all of your double hatter basis. I gave you all a script, which I'm happy to take as read for our twin hatters as well. So we'll record that into the minutes you have already declared those to myself. Thank you.
Excellent. So any other interests? No. In which case we'll move on to item three, items requiring urgent attention. There are none to my knowledge. Item four announcements, none to my knowledge. Questions from members of the council, none received. Questions from members of the public, none received. So agenda item seven, key decision, local government reorganisation proposal. So what I'll do is I will make a, a quick opening statement and then I'm going to hand over to Paul, who has done most of the work from a member's point of view. So first of all, just to reiterate my massive thanks to all the officers that have been involved and their teams and the effort. It's been a fantastic effort to produce what is a very clear and concise paper. And particularly to Paul for all, you know, for all the effort that you've put in and time. It's certainly meant that we've been able to concentrate, many of us have been able to concentrate on, you know, the services that we're trying to improve around childrens and adults and roads, et cetera. So thank you, Paul, for that. I won't say any more than that really about the paper because I think, you know, Paul needs to explain it. But I will just say sort of anecdotally, so I was at the County Council Network Conference. Just come back from it. And it was a lot, some of the discussion was around local government reorganisation. And it was very interesting to hear of councils that had gone through it already. And what was clear to me was that the councils that had basically stuck to the footprint of the existing county council had moved ahead. They'd gone through it and they were now moving ahead and delivering the services that they want to. The ones that had split up and were disaggregated are going through three to five years at the very least of continual churn and work, trying to, trying to get through the legacy of, of, of LGR, I think were their words. And they didn't seem, let's say, they didn't, they were waiting to come out the other side of that. So I, I think that is, that is, you know, I think that people should be aware that that is what the, in, we, we can all do it in theory. But in practice, that's what's, that's what appears to be happening with, with councils. Anyway, without further ado, I will pass over to Paul.
Thank you very much indeed for that kind introduction, Leader. And I, I'd like to join with you in thanking our officers hugely for the extraordinary amount of work they've done in this. I don't know how, I mean, the, the main document is now up to nearly 400 pages now. We've had a chance to look at the recently delivered proposal from Plymouth Exeter and Torbay. It might have been even longer. We've now seen the proposal from Exeter, which came out about three or four hours ago. And they have had to monitor this constantly whilst, whilst going along a straight line. But I think it's also important that we pay respect to all other members and councillors across Devon who have been doing work as we have too. And there is this certain expectation, not hope, that once we have all gone through the next two or three weeks, we will meet again soon enough as Team Devon, all of the councils back in the same space with any differences behind us and moving forward in the interest of the people of, of Devon. Because that's the most important thing. So I thought what might be helpful today is we were very grateful for the input of our own membership as well. Throughout this process, there's been a lot of engagement. Again, it's in there in the report, a lot of external engagement, a lot of internal engagement across party as well. And so the members very kindly gathered last Friday. It's in the minutes you have before you have last Friday's meeting. We were able to record 23 different points that were raised on the day, which were also answered on the day. And we were also asked by the membership to consider another 21 other points that were made, not just for noting, but for our consideration. So I thought what we could do is structure what we're going to do now through those 21. Don't worry, some of them come in clusters of three or four, so it shouldn't keep us here all day. So if I can point you then to the minutes of last Friday, the 14th, and if you go to the penultimate page, those points raised in debate included the following matters. First of all, members overall thanked both officers and members for their time and effort. So thank you, members, for that. Concerns were raised over the amount of time that local government reorganisation had taken when providing key services should be the focus of the council. And I think the leader has just covered that. I think that's a point we also would endorse and accept. A general frustration at point three was expressed that such important decisions were not being taken at a local level, but by central government at a time when devolution was key to the future delivery of services. And I think what's worth saying there is that certainly the leader and I, chief executive and other officers will seek quite soon to see the two ministers of state responsible for this and take the discussions forward. If we achieve at the end of this meeting, a certain outcome for Devon County Council. Point five, and I think this is a critical part. It's, we've been asked to consider how we build on improvements, or indeed you might say eliminate risks in relation to LGR in social care. And so I've discussed this briefly with both councillor Jeffries and councillor Kivell. And I'm incredibly grateful that they're both prepared to speak on these subjects. If I can ask Richard Jeffries first, please, just to say some words around children's care. Thank you, Richard.
Wonderful. Thank you, Paul. This is, this is quite a, quite a big subject, but also it's taking a lot of focus at the moment. And the focus that I've been, been on since, since taking up this post has been on, on children. And as lead member for children, I've particularly responded to be to look at the various proposals through the lens that we're, what will be best and safest for children, young people and families in Devon. Most children and families now have much interest in which local government structure delivers their services. They just want their services to be good, to have choices and to be safe. My job as lead member is to provide the optimal conditions for success for those services. So they can achieve good and improving outcomes for children, young people and families in Devon. Having looked at all the proposals, I believe that the new Devon option gives the best chance of success. And it's also, just wanted to bring up, it's important to remember that we're, we're not, through this process, we're not designing new structures from scratch. And that none of the proposals that are out there represent the status quo. All of them involve significant changes. With any of the proposals out there, there are risks and opportunities for children's services. All of them will bring some of the benefits of unitary services and all of them will involve some kind of innovation. None of them will leave the services exactly how they are. Children's service itself is a delicate ecosystem, interdependent services and partnerships that's been built up over time. And as the leader has alluded to, the footprint of, footprint of those is in the county of Devon is provided by Devon County Council and Plymouth and Torbay councils. All the other proposals out there would involve significant disruption or disaggregation, breaking up of, breaking up of services. The new Devon proposal would leave the footprint of Devon County, Devon County Council services and Plymouth and Torbay's undisturbed. Many experts have advised us on the risks of disaggregation in children's services particularly. And our services for children in Devon have struggled in recent years, but are now on a clear trajectory of improvement now. I've recently had feedback from the Ofsted monitoring visit that happened here recently. And that was very positive and recognised the progress we're making. Amongst the other KPIs that show that we are on a journey of improvement and moving in the direct right direction. I'm, I'm concerned that other proposals that are out there that would break the service down into, into more units would require more, more senior leaders in that, which seems something which is not, not available to us out there in the market and also something which we could ill afford across the whole of Devon. We have, we have seen great improvement in the leadership of Devon, Devon County Council's children's services. And we now have that, the idea of breaking, breaking that up would increase, increase risk to vulnerable children. And that's why, by some distance, I believe the new Devon proposal gives us some of those benefits and produces the, the risk. However, the reasons for favouring the, the new Devon option are not simply because it's less risky than the alternatives. It offers the, the advantages, the current advantages of economies of scale. And through integration with existing district services, new kind of localism and a one stop service of families. At the beginning of this, I said, children and families aren't particularly interested in what structure we, what structure we have, but how, how they interact with the services and having that ability to go to one place and get all, all the services they need. And there are exciting prospects when aligned with the, the services currently out there with districts in housing, leisure and licensing. And how those would interact better with the children's service to prioritise children, young people in all of our local government services. And again, that one stop shop for families part, which I see as an, as an advantage. So I, I don't know whether Julian's going to touch on schools, but the other thing I wanted to, want to say about, about schools is the, the current DCC footprint, the ecosystem of schools and send provision and school transport has been built around that footprint. And again, splitting that up could end up as kind of postcode lottery effect where you, as a, as a single family, you could end up having to interact with lots of different authorities to get the same services that you need. So in conclusion, the new Devon proposal, I believe, hits a sweet spot where we maintain the strategic partnerships that we have. Because again, a lot, a lot of our partners align geographically in health and the police with our footprint currently. And we, we've got that economy of scale to afford the children's services that we need and offer those in accordance to need and not where you live in Devon. And the ability to integrate them into a locality based one stop shop for families, I believe, gives the only realistic possibility of recruiting and retaining the leadership needed to transform our services from, from where they are to being good and into outstanding ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Councillor Jeffries, very much indeed for that. I don't feel as if officers particularly need to contribute further on that at the moment. No, thank you very much. Cabinet, I'm doubting there are questions there, are there at the moment? No. Okay, thank you. So children's service is duly considered and thank you very much for that, Richard. If I can come to the other Richard now, please for to discuss adult social care. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arnett. And can I just say from the outset, thank you as well for coming to Teambridge and, and explaining the 911 to my group. That was very informative for them. They, it was being lost a little bit at the start, but you cleared their perceptions on that. So thank you for that. And I'd also like to agree with the leader on, on splitting of unitaries. I recently visited Buckinghamshire where they were on the five year journey. They were at the end of the five year journey of, of that split as such. And they'd spent the whole of the five years trying to make sure that no one slipped through the net. And that was their biggest fear for five years within children's and adult social care. So that is so important. I've been on this journey since, like you, at the very start in December 18th, where our Christmas has disappeared under a deluge of emails and Russians trying to get and looking at the best options for our residents. And for me, having seen all those, I'm very concerned that most of the proposals don't really talk about adult social care in its present form. Or our new transformation partnership that we are moving forward. I don't see that, I don't see that vision within those reports. I'm very disappointed in that and I thought I would see more. But New Devon for me has that safety valve. And that safety valve is that we provide continuity in our critical services. Like Richard was just talking about there, the children safeguarding. Well, that's the same for adult social care as well. We've got to have that safeguarding in, in, in place, avoiding a disruption and risks that could be caused by disaggregation under a separate unitary service. So that's my biggest concern going forward. And we would have to put so much in place to make sure that doesn't happen. Because it's, it's one of the biggest fears that we have is that safeguarding slip in splitting up our services that are, can I say that adult social care? And I know children's has turned around adult social care, CQC, just happened. What I've actually seen there is the passion within the officers that are delivering on a day to day basis. That is something that we cannot afford to lose. And I've had many emails from residents concerned that have looked into this and that have the same concerns that I have and colleagues have as well. So I certainly have made my mind up. I started with an open mind and, and will listen to colleagues through this meeting. But the, the big thing for me is that safety valve that we've got in place that I don't see the other options having. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that, Richard, both Richards. Again, I feel as if we've, we've, we've not only noted but considered those factors. And again, thank council, I see the chair of council is in the meeting. Thank council for helping us with, with these. So moving on through the list, we go to the potential for the proposed unitary structure to better protect the environment. Now, is that, I'm just looking at councillor Hodgson down there. Is there anything you'd like to address, Jackie?
Thank you. For me, as much as I've had an open mind and remain, I haven't to have an open mind about how we do sort this out. I think I found the weekend that we've just had with the County Council's network very interesting and listened to some of the challenges that have been experienced by other councils, either going through it or finished going through it and are still wading their way through lots of work. But for me, the environment in itself actually leans much closer anyway towards the full, full sized Devon. I think it's, I mean, we've got national landscapes to look after. We have waste services that at the moment are mainly, I mean, while we create policy at, at county level, it's the districts that do the delivery of services. And there's such a hotchpotch there of how they do it and different success rates. That this is an opportunity actually by having one Devon to actually bring those services together and have much more harmonisation and better recycling rates and generally a better service, I think, for the customers. In terms of climate change and the biodiversity that we're seeking to protect, I mean, the environment does and pollution don't recognise political boundaries. They just work across. And I think at Devon's scale is, is a good scale to continue the work that is done with addressing the climate, the climate crisis. And also in terms of biodiversity, it's, it also, I think, works at this level. I think in terms of district councils, district councils, you know, I mean, the district council that I sit on at Southhames has been looking at climate change and looking at really good works. And of course, at the end of the day, it's about communities as well taking action. But I think at the county level, we can affect behaviour change much more strongly. And certainly when we look at the way that transport operates underneath that as well, public transport is, and mass transport for is a way to actually get people to change ideally up to a third of their carbon footprint. So again, I think the one Devon, the unitary council, I think is, is the model that can deliver this probably the most smoothly and, and efficiently.
Thank you very much for that, Jackie. For the next point, number seven, I'll, I'll look to councillor Bucowski to perhaps come in. So number seven was, while some members recognise the benefits of unitary structures, particularly operational and financial, and not having to work across numerous boundaries. It was recognised across the board that the whole process had been generally divisive, distracting from core business and had caused friction. So on the second part of that sentence, after the second comma, to an extent, it's, yeah, there's been a little bit of division. There's been, I, I, to be honest, I wouldn't put it higher than friction. I think it's to be expected. And as I said earlier, I think we'll find that relationships within councils have survived fantastically well. And when we meet as Team Devon or will be well. But I think that question helps to queue up. James, perhaps if you'd like to make some comments on your, on your take on the kind of operational and financial strategic aspects of this.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. I, I think I'll probably start with the irony here, isn't it? And it's not lost on me and I don't think it's lost on anybody, is it? The, the government speaks of strengthening local democracy through reorganisation. Yet the final decision will not be taken by locally elected councillors who are responsible and accountable to the communities we serve or, or affected by it. Nor, as I understand, residents will not be given the democratic safeguard of a referendum, which in my view is the only way any option could carry a true mandate. Instead, what we're seeing is councils across Devon have been placed in an uncomfortable position of competing with each other. Of course, we will have different views. We represent different places, each with their own opportunities, pressures and risks. And I'm acutely aware that those risks look different depending on whether you are viewing the reorganisation through the eyes of a county council, a district council or even a town or parish council. But Deputy Leader, it's really not difficult to see this convoluted and competitive process as anything else other than a distraction at a time when the government is looking to remove £60 million from Devon County Council over the next three years and millions more from our districts. None of us asked for this process of reorganisation. And it comes at a moment when every council in Devon is simply trying to steady the ship. But I acknowledge we can't refuse to engage and we need to protect residents from the consequences of a poorly designed model. And we need to make sure the proposal submitted is the strongest it can be and offers the very best for residents. I do want to speak, there was a question around debt. And if I just put my notes, if I may, I think it was answered at the meeting. But I would like to just reaffirm around the, the question around debt and assets. Because there was some uncertainty. So I want to be really clear that all existing debt, whether that's, it's held by the county council or the district, will transfer to the new authority or authorities. There is no plan for a special write off under any model. So that's not exclusive to us. There is no write off of, of debt. And the debt will also always be apportioned by head of population. So on a, on a single unitary authority, that will obviously get all of the debt. On if there's multiple unity authorities, that will be split by head of population. Assets, however, are not shared out like that. Fixed assets are clearly where they sit, buildings and such. And the president is very clear that they will transfer to whichever authority the geography falls within. So under a single Devon, residents will inherit the combined debt and the combined asset base. So you get your, your assets and liabilities, which, which seems fair to me. Under any split model, you will create unavoidable winners and unavoidable losers because you will get an equal share of the debt, but you will not get an equal share of the assets. And we talk about assets, we talk about schools, public buildings, bridges, road infrastructure, the list goes on, social housing, everything, you know, leisure centres, all of that. So it's every bit of community infrastructure that we have. And I think it's really important that I raise that today because we owe it to residents to be really clear. Under any model, the debt is transferred and it's not Devon County Council's debt. You know, it's built things for communities, but you'll get a share of the debt, but not necessarily a share of the assets. I also want to just move on, if I may, to talk about something that was raised at the meeting. And I'm certainly not here to pick fault with other proposals. We're not doing that, but I do need to make reference because it was raised by members. And I think it's clear again that we're honest. And one of the real important differences between the proposals from my perspective comes down to how the costs are allocated. A different model, the four, five, one model, offering multiple unitary authorities relies on a simple split of head, sorry, head of population. That's within their proposal, they're very honest about that, that they have split the costs equally by the number of residents they have. On the surface, that sounds tidy, but it is the wrong tool for high risk services. Demand for adult social care, children's services and send does not track population evenly. It follows needs, deprivation, age profile and complexity, and those very sharply across Devon. When you divide costs as if every resident carries the same service pressure, you build in structural unfairness. Our approach, and I'll talk about our approach, does not do that. Obviously, we have one unitary and our modelling behind this proposal is built from actual caseloads, real patterns of need and true cost drivers across the county. It's been tested at granular level and I would add it's been externally verified. So it's not just our officers that have done this, it has been externally verified. And when you apply demand based modelling rather than flat population split, the picture is really stark. Under the four, five, one model, the northern authority would inherit higher need, higher cost and lower income from day one. A single unitary authority has the financial debt to absorb unexpected shocks of high costs and high risk services, high cost placements, severe weather events, safeguarding surges, system failures. And Deputy Leader, these are not theoretical, they are regular features of modern local government. So Leader, it's not about preference, it's about using the right method to reflect reality. I think I've covered most of the financial bits. There's a little bit about risk, but I'll probably come back later if that's not covered. If, if that's covered everything that you were expecting effectively.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. So I think we, we mustn't just bind ourselves to these, these things we've been asked to consider. Certainly we should come back for further comments after that. But that makes great progress on that, councillor Bucowski. So thank you. Number eight was the need to recognise and note some of the contradictions. For example, other reports that outline the success of smaller unitary structures versus the challenges of working across larger geographies. I think James and we, I think we're trying not to do comparisons as much as possible today between others. But I think James has made some points around that. And of course, as we know, other unitaries, existing unitaries are smaller. And we are after all saying that we consider Torbay credible to continue as it is. And it is of course, I think, no more than 140,000 people. So it would be a very small unitary. So I think we do recognise that that can happen elsewhere, but it is not perhaps relevant to the, to the new Devon idea. Number nine is the importance of recognising a unique selling point and that whatever decisions are made in the future, focus on smooth transitions to new structures. Well, the USP that seems to have come up actually is the brand of Devon itself in particular. I might bring that point together with some other stuff as well, which links up, which is the need to be mindful of the impact on local which is the need to be mindful of the impact on local government staff. So this is the piece around, as we know, we have 5,000 employees. There are thousands of other employees on other councillors, on other councils as well. This is something we know they're all worried about at the moment, particularly if, as it seems not unlikely, there may even be a one-year delay in all of this. But I mean, I wonder, Simon, can I ask you, and perhaps with the help even of Maria Chakrabarti, to discuss this from the point of view of our own staff and officers, how it's going for them and, you know, what we anticipate? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Leader, of course. Before I start, may I extend and wish to be associated with the comments of the leader and yourself for the amazing input that the officers have had in order to help us, the, the constant debate discussion, check-in challenge that we've had all the way through to reach the position that we are. And I'd caveat all of that by saying that the sentiment within the administrative group has been around the people of Devon and the impacts and effects. I'd also like to thank my fellow councillor, Bucowski, for his very erudite summation of where we were from his perspective. And I share quite a lot of that without wishing to show a predetermined position. I think from the various meetings with business and people that we've had over the last month, Deputy Leader, I think the three things that have come forward are, there is a degree of concern, but not assuming that it's a devastating impact within, within the staff. That is human nature. I think any of us confronted with that would also feel the same. What we've done is try to reassure people that at the end of the day, whatever the outcome, there will actually need to be people in position continuing the service that is already provided. I think the unique selling point is exactly what it says on the tin, the One Devon brand. And we've seen from our business community, whether it be primary industry, whether it be all sorts of tech industry, we've seen it from the educational services, that they're buying into this immediately. So I think it stands to reason that these are positives. If I could just run through one or two things that are annotated here, and I'll be very, single sentences, shortest payback period we've heard about financially. I think that stacks up. The maintaining and continuation and improvement of critical services. I mean, that's a tick in a box for any one. The benefits of scale, both financially and with the employment implications, the, the amalgamation of staff with mineral, minimal, mineral, minimal disruption for the services that they provide and oversee. The, the, the greatest risk for the children and the negation of that and the less disruption, the single, simple and clear message that comes out for all service users. The, the no need for duplication, the delay that some of that can cause. Recruitment retention of staff, this under a single. Sorry, I was just hoping that my fellow councillor didn't choke as I was speaking. I didn't realise that had such a bad effect. Recruitment intention, retention of staff. I mean, all these are very obvious. Dare I say, a reduction in competitiveness. But that should actually lead to the focus for a better delivery of service. The, the economic development and the potential for that with the singular brand, the unique selling point. USP has another meaning, I think, for some of us, but unique selling point I get. The, the, the ability, as we've seen from councillor Keeling's speech, to, to have that coordination between an administrative body and a partnership arrangement rather than consultative arrangement. I think also you have to bear in mind the, the whole idea and concept of other organisations, the health side of things, for example, where it can all be coordinated instead of being so much more dispersed. I'll stop there because I'm conscious that the, the director for people and, and culture was also asked to contribute, but thank you, Deputy Leader.
Thank you, councillor Cliss. Yes, because this, this concerns a lot of Devon people who are actually employees as well. It would just be, I think, really helpful, Maria, if you could, we all know the level of engagement there's been and whatever, but it'd be really interesting to hear from you about that as well, please, and how you feel that sits at the moment.
Thank you. Yeah, so we've been very mindful about how we engage with staff through the process. So we've had roadshows across the different office locations. We've done some online briefings that yourself and councillor Cliss was at during the briefing. I think over 700 staff attended and a further 700 have watched it since. So we've been doing quite a lot from that regard. And we have a programme to continue with that level engagement. We run regular change and resilience courses and we're regularly asking about LGR. And I think the feedback is it's, it's very much unknown and staff don't know what's happening. And what we've been trying to assure them with the model that we're proposing is that actually for probably 75% of staff, whether that's county council staff or district staff, that those frontline staff will see very minimal change. Because within DCC, we already work on a locality model, as has been previously mentioned, that aligns with lots of our partners. So there would be very limited change. And as councillor Cliss was referring to, the risk where we've reported back in children's services for the last couple of years about the, the level of agency staff and the drive to increase the permanence levels, we've gone from 51% back in December to 86% permanence across staff base now. That's brilliant, but with, and then some of the, with that permanence comes a feeling of stability and security for staff. We would, the last we want to do is destabilise that with staff not knowing where they'd be based, et cetera. So I think this model enables us to reassure staff as much as we're able to that actually majority of staff would see minimal change. So as I said, we have a programme of communication planned for staff. But we're very minded about the impact that this can have on staff as this goes on.
Thank you, Maria, very much for that. Thank you, Simon, too. So if we move on through the considerations that council have asked us to look at, some of them are just suggestions, I think, don't need great discussion. So number 12, being aware of actual demand for services across the county. I, I think that has been covered because, yes, because from councillor Bucowski, councillor Cliss, so certainly Maria, obviously, this proposal is aware of the demand for services across the county. You might, I suppose, argue that of all the councils in this process, it's probably the best place because it has a knowledge base around that as well. Thirteen, that some services could benefit from being joined up. For example, housing services and place-making functions, such as planning and the delivery functions thereof. Again, I think that speaks for itself, doesn't it, that planning would be joined up? There are risks clearly with that as well, because, and we'll come to this in a minute, we don't really understand what the likely role of a mayoral strategic authority would be in some of the larger planning matters. We look at the announcement from government or the indication from government, from Secretary of State Reid yesterday, that he will look to have his own distinct powers, I think, in any planning proposals over 150 homes, I think that's correct. So we're moving into a period of absolute change, if that's what goes through. I think we need to be mindful in the background. And we had the opportunity at the county council network to engage with Baroness Taylor, who is really the last person standing from the original ministerial cohort, looking at this at the beginning of this year. And it was reassuring to know she's across the piece, but also that she is leading in the law both on planning, on the planning bill and on local government reorganisation, which shows how interlinked these two things are, but also how under stress it is. A question, number 14, maybe for, which is a need to consider the pension fund as an area of risk, I might ask to come to James on that. And also the county farms estate, I'll come to Simon on that if that's okay. So, so James, can I just have a look at, just come to you around the pension fund first?
Thank you, Deputy Leader. I would probably defer to the section 151 officer for technical guidance. But I mean, essentially, the LGPS funds don't split during reorganisation, but there is risk. Absolutely, there is risk from, from the employer structure within the fund. So obviously, with one unitary model, that, that risk is, is less, but if it's then disaggregated. But I will, as I said, defer to the section 151 officer, so I don't talk myself into a hole and then get that, that look that I'm in trouble.
Excellent. Sort of a crash, a crash on the financial markets that then ensues. So yes, Angie Sinclair, who's our finance director, please, thank you.
Thank you. So all of the councils in Devon are currently members of the Devon Pension Fund, employers within the Devon Pension Fund, so that will not change. I think the risk that was spoken about at county council was around the change of our pooling company, our investment company Brunel. So we've had instruction from government that Brunel must cease. And all of the shareholders, the 10 councils, the 10 pension funds that are currently members of that pool will need to move to alternative pools. So that is ongoing at the moment and expected to go live in April. So will not be impacted by LGR, it will be well established before any vesting day of new councils. I think there is a risk around who will be the continuing authority as the administration of the pension fund. So at the moment, that is clearly Devon County Council. When Devon County Council ceases to exist, there will need to be a new administering authority. Under the new Devon proposal, we're explicit that we expect that unitary, the new Devon, the 911, the nine, to be the new administering authority for the pension fund. I don't believe any of the other proposals are explicit around pension fund. So we're hoping to minimise the risk in the new Devon proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie, very much for that. Coming to councillor Cliss for just a little about the county farms estate, please.
Thank you, Deputy Leader, a tongue-in-cheek comment. I noticed the temperatures increased to eight degrees and the footsie share index has increased by 1.4% with your non-announcement and that being left to the S151 officer. Anyway, less of my cheek, I think, and it's quite a straightforward comment from me in all respects in the fact that the proposal, the 911, which safeguard what is only a treasured asset for any local authority and any other division may not secure its future. I think also, if I may pontificate a little on this, this is more than a treasured possession of any local authority. It is a genuine way for younger entrants into a primary industry to get a toehold. And we should be very proud, following the pathway of the leader who talked about youth and younger people in our community. And as we look forward to the populous figures for 2040, and we see the only demographic in change is in, in population is going to be the almost 100% increase in the age range between 45 and eight, sorry, 65 and 80 plus, whereas everything below that's virtually standing still. I also think that we live in an age where food security and, sorry, I'm diverting off the subject, but I think it's very crucial that we realise what a treasured possession we have here. And also energy security are of vital importance. I hope that's clear. Thank you, Deputy Leader.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next couple of questions, I'm just gonna put them a bit further down the list, 15 and 16, because they come together really for, I suppose, future actions from the leader. If we go to question or point number 17, it's to note actions in some areas in terms of informing town and parishes and their role in neighbourhood area committees as being able to engage with the highest tier of local government. And I think it would be helpful, although I know you've heard it all before, if I can ask Kerry to give her best short two or three paragraphs on what these neighbourhood area committees are, again, because I don't think everybody has necessarily grasped that. And what their, what their potential is for ensuring that the, what's called the lowest tier of local government and what will be the highest tier of local government will engage. Sorry to throw that at you, Kerry, but you know.
Thank you very much, Deputy Leader. So the new Devon proposal includes empowering neighbourhoods, which is one of government's criteria, is through having neighbourhood area committees. The close cooperation and work that we undertake with the health sector has meant that we have looked at aligning neighbourhood area committees alongside changes around health. I'm thinking at the moment about health and social care geography. The purpose of a neighbourhood area committee can only be advisory at the moment, but the Devolution and Empowering Communities Act will change that. And we've set out in full in the proposal, the ambition that that would enable local decision-making about local issues, looking at solutions that can best bring together insight of people at the local level, whether that's town and parish councils, that's alongside neighbourhood police representatives, fire representatives, schools, businesses, et cetera. The proposal sets out 16, that that needs to be shaped in terms of quantity. It also sets out the process that we would need to go through for Exeter as well and parishing. But I'll leave that to Maria to explain. I think there's more questions on that on the list. But in essence, it's, it's about empowering local communities with decision-making with the elected members and the new unitary sat there alongside those community organisations, listening to views, feeding those up into the new unitary authority, and also helping the unitary councillors to account for what happens in the locations that they're in.
Thank you very much indeed for that, Kerry. So let's move on now, we're nearly there. So I will, I will ask the leader, I think, around, around questions 15 and 16. Asking Cabinet to consider sending a communication to MPs about a lack of consultation and engagement over LGR. The leader is, if you may not realise, this is, is the headline item in the municipal journal today, after his series of comments in Marlow yesterday. And also the importance of lobbying, acknowledging poor funding over a number of years. So I'd be really interested to hear from the leader now on the kind of his political take, his what next, who do we need to talk to next and so forth.
Yes, thank you, Paul. And I think just following on from your comments about at the end of this process, we've all got to come together, and that's absolutely right, of councils of whatever colour. You know, our duty is to deliver the services that our residents deserve. And, and within that, absolutely is, is proper funding for local government and particularly our residents in Devon, you know, the fair funding, the fact that our children get less than nearly every other area within the country is just grossly unfair and affects their very chance, their world chances. So yes, we will continue to lobby with our MPs to get them to look at the funding. I also think we need to move on a bit in the sense of, I think I heard the phrase at the conference, which I thought was quite good, that it's called fiscal whinging. And, and I quite like that. So we need to be, move, move on from that. And so, and I'm really looking for, I mean, Denise isn't here, but the paper that is coming to, in the December cabinet is all about our solution to many of the problems that we face, particularly around SEND. And we hope that the government will take up, take that opportunity to support us in our way forward. So those, those are just a couple of examples, I think, of where we talked to our MPs. But I also hasten to add, and I said it at the full council meeting, that we should not allow this whole procedure to be a smokescreen to the severe lack of funding there is in local government that is bringing us to our knees. So I think with those in mind, the battle and the fiscal whinging continues. the battle and the fiscal whinging continues, but also some very constructive and proposals that we will put forward where we think we have solutions to some of the problems that we know government is grappling with. In the end, government and ourselves are aligned on many, many issues that we want to do about around inclusion in schools, about solving the send deficit, and indeed delivering better services for our local people. So, you know, we have the same goals, and it's just sometimes it's it's just that we might not agree with the process that we're going to get there.
Thank you very much indeed for that, Leader. So there are really just a couple of standing points to be addressed. The first is around the role of strategic authorities, mayoral, I'll pick that up for about sixty seconds, and then come to Maria in a minute for a proper number of questions that arise from members' concerns around the democratic side of this. Question nineteen, or the consideration nineteen, was the role of strategic mayoral authorities and the importance of ensuring proper devolution takes place. So members will be aware, and I think I certainly said it at council as well, that the administration's view is there is, there is, there is a wider question to be asked, which is, what is the point? Indeed, what is the validity of local government reorganisation if you don't also possibly even in advance of it have a mayoral strategic authority there? And we have, particularly Kerry and I have, and with other officers, particularly Kerry and I, have engaged with so many stakeholders, they're listed in the papers across Devon, and they all are, it's not right to disclose what their preference is in terms of L G R, but in terms of strategic mayoral, they're saying, please, now, ASAP, because there are funds there that we cannot draw down on unless we are on one. So this council, this administration will push to get that strategic mayoral in place as fast as possible. And I think we we had a very positive conversation with Cornwall at the combined, at the County Council Network, which I think left us in no doubt, you know, happy certainty Cornwall just is not coming into a strategic authority with us at all. It's understood they're making some progress with government in making the case for themselves, perhaps as a unitary that is also has acquired some of the powers of a strategic authority, in which case we start to achieve certainty that we are then Devon standing alone. So we will need to go for that as soon as possible, and we'll try and we'll try and make those steps and let everybody know it. So coming now to Maria, if I may, because we were looking at, I won't read out all the members' concerns here because they're captured really the questions we've got, but they are around membership, democratic representation and so forth. So if I could just ask Maria Price then a few questions. First of all, just to, there's, the number of one hundred and seven councillors has been mentioned, just to, you know, for us to understand how that figure's been calculated and so forth.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. So we had quite extensive consultation with the Boundary Commission and M H C L G, and was specifically told, don't just double up the number of councillors or work from the number you think you need. For Electra, you need to really start from a bottom up working, and that really involves looking at what committees we think a new unitary may want to have in place, the workload of those committees, and then start looking at the statutory guidance around it. We talked at length around exceptionality, rurality, and how that would work, I suppose, in a wider structure. So that's how the number of one hundred and seven has arrived at. We started off looking at a committee structure and the impact that would have, and effectively, how many councillors would be needed to sit on those committees. So that included full council, cabinet planning, the strategic area committees, licensing, regulatory, five scrutiny committees, and obviously the sixteen area committees. That got to around about four hundred seats for those meetings alone, so members that would need to sit in those seats. And we're looking at an average, really, benchmarking nationally of how many hours would councillors need to put into that to get to that figure. Looking at an average of approximately twenty two to twenty five hours per week per councillor, which was really made up of eight to ten hours of community work and casework, attending one meet in a week of two hours, an hour's prep for that, and then obviously the travel time, factoring in the rural factor, around about two to three hours. There's no particular science with this, it's very much a thought of what will be needed for that, for that new unitary, and what will councillors need to be doing, where will they need to be based? But that's roughly how we got to the one hundred and seven, if that provides an explanation for you.
Yes, thank you, Maria, very much. So just building on that, a few more. And you've mentioned rurality and how that's been considered, also the number of committees and likely numbers of meetings. Could you just help us understand the national benchmarking that's taken place? Also, whether advice from Boundary Commission and M H C L G has been adhered to? Yeah, can we go to those next then, please?
Certainly can. So benchmarking, we did look at other rural counties, obviously working in the governance working group as well, we had great discussions around this. Again, there's no, there's no real science to this, so the packet pages eighty seven to ninety gives a lot of detail around what we consider, and some of the numbers of what was sitting at some of the other rural counties and those that converted from county into unitary. Guidance from the Boundary Commission was actually that you should be looking at around about ninety nine councillors, they didn't want us to go much over that, but they would consider exceptionality. And there's no real definition provided in any statute or regulation or from the Boundary Commission on why that figure of ninety nine's there, or exactly how you get to exceptionality on the grounds or the criteria for exceptionality. But they were clear that rurality could well be one of those exceptional circumstances, hence the reason that we are looking at more than one hundred and seven, but we've adhered to their guidance as far as how we got to the one hundred and seven. But we would have a case for rurality being an exceptionality to consider. I explained.
Thank you, Maria. Yes, and I think kind of, I'd be quite minded, and I've supplied you with the wording to add a recommendation to what we're looking at today around this, just to ensure we do do that little bit of extra work. Do you have the wording there?
Just bear with us a moment, we have worked something.
I've probably jumped the gun there. So what I'll do is, no, I won't, I'll let us just entertain ourselves for a moment. We're going to go to Exeter next, everybody, just to say. But I tell you what, I'll make a start on the extra subject, whether trying to find, so. Oh, you got it. Okay, there's the wording then, please.
Take something else first. I think, Deputy Leader, this is obviously in response to the council, and that's really important. So potentially a recommendation, a new C, and the other recommendation becomes D, so that in response to the views of the council, cabinet delegate to the Director of Legal and Democratic Services Authority to review the councillor numbers by recalculating the figures and reviewing committee structures, aiming for a councillor number between one oh seven and one eleven.
I mean, we just want that to be obviously in consultation with Leader, Deputy Leader and Chief Executive.
Okay, so thank you for that. So we've got that there.
It's a draft, Chair.
It's what?
It's obviously just a draft, so we can play around with all that.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll come back to that in the debate in a moment, after I hand it back to the leader. The final thing is, there were points made in the meeting around Exeter, and I did answer that point to the best of my ability at the time, which was that, well, first of all, I suppose the obvious thing to say is Exeter has published its own proposal about four hours ago, so it's not the easiest thing for us to make plans for Exeter when we haven't been sure what they want to do for themselves. I think we're still awaiting the master map there as well. But certainly, I would have had informal discussions with Exeter at least a year ago, courteously suggesting that they may wish to start looking at parishing themselves. But again, it's not for us to tell them to do that. Within our neighbourhood area committee structure, they would have, of course, have their own neighbourhood area committees, perhaps as many as three. In our report, we've done our best just to show respect to them when we've dealt with the civic side of things, but that wasn't meant to be exhaustive. That really is a matter for for Exeter. But I just wonder, Maria, if there's anything else you can add there as far as Exeter's position is concerned?
Thank you, Deputy Leader. So, yes, our report has dealt with the intention to recognise the importance of Exeter as a city, really important to protect those historic rights and the ceremonial function. The reason that there isn't proposal to go into an immediate community governance review is because we were specifically asked by government in the White Paper back in December to not start any new community governance reviews during the L G R process. So the intention would be that as soon as L G R was completed and the proposals popped in place, that the community governance review could then take place, and obviously, parishing would follow and that process would take place. But purely the Charter, not renaming the Charter trustees, would be there purely to protect the historic rights of Exeter and ensure that they are where they need to be. The councillors representing Exeter in the new authority, were that to be in place, would automatically become the Charter trustees. So again, there'd be protection there that they would be the ones that held this until the community governance review could be completed and those powers put in place. Again, not something that's particularly within our control. And it could be something that if the proposal were to go forward with government, they may relax that and say, actually, there's a time period that can happen before L G R takes place, a bit like they may want to look at other parts of Boundary abuse before, they may look at them afterwards. That's something that could be dealt with. So it, the reason that we had put it as that was purely to recognise and protect Exeter really and those rights.
Lovely. Thank you, Maria, very much. So just thanking council again for these things they wished us to consider. I hope they've been covered as much as we've been able. I'll, I'll throw back to the leader now to take us through the rest of the debate.
Just in terms of representation, I think it's really important that exceptionality recognises that, which I'm now hearing in terms of the spending review, that remoteness is a key criteria in terms of considering service delivery. We've heard criteria such as index multiple deprivation and so on and so forth, but to hear remoteness, and I think that's something members need to consider, that this is not just a rural authority, but it's a rural authority that has remoteness as a key profile when you look at Dartmoor, Exmoor, when you actually do look at the way that our infrastructure is set up across the whole county, and perhaps, Leader, you could reflect on that, because I know we've had this discussion that, you know, delivering services or representing communities here is very different from some other rural areas in the south of England. It is different, so maybe it would be helpful to, for you to hear from you on that matter as well, because I think it's important for any possible Boundary Commission work in the future that people understand that Devon is quite different in that way.
And, and thank you, Donna, and it's certainly probably, of all the things that concerns me the most, I do think the representation is absolutely a crucial factor here. So thank you for highlighting that, and I think we should make more of that. I mean, I was very taken when I've been at meetings where people have been discussing it, and particularly of rural communities, is is the one area they say that they wish they'd done more is to push back on the representation, because, interestingly, one of the answers I received from a panel member on yesterday around savings was that she said that they would make a forty thousand pound saving because the number of people that phoned up, but it was the wrong council, which is, you know, understandable, you know, but and with one, it will just be the one council. But what she didn't say was the number of people that phoned up because they couldn't get hold of their local councillor, and they had an issue, so they phoned up the council. And I would suggest that that would run into hundreds of thousands of pounds. So whereas there is a sort of, an idea that somehow by reducing the number of councils, you're going to save money, I would contest that it is exactly the opposite. The fewer councils you are, the more it will cost councils to carry out the services they want, and the worse service people will feel in their communities, because they do not know who their local councillor is, or they feel distanced from them. So, you know, I'm a massive supporter that I feel that we should definitely push forward the exceptionality rule here and say to the Boundary Commission, well, I mean, you may have your rules, but we've got services and residents to deliver to, and that's more important to us than your arbitrary rules, quite frankly. So, you know, I don't think I could, and I was particularly taken with with Thomas. Thomas's quite passionate plea at council saying that basically, if there are too many residents per councillor, he will not be able to be a councillor, and yet he is exactly the sort of person we want to be a councillor. You do not want council full of old people like me, retired or whatever, who can afford to be a councillor. We want young, vibrant people with ideas from all sections of society and community. So I think it is a very, very, very crucial part of our submission. So I'll take, I'll calm down on that now. Sorry? Okay, yeah. Okay, we'll hear that. Just, just so that that will, that will be little three or C in the recommendations, yeah, and then D would be the, and submit to the sector state, yeah.
So just on that wording, Leader, that in response to the views of the council, the cabinet delegate authority to the Director of Legal Services and the Chief Executive in liaison with the leader and deputy leader to review councillor numbers, considering the elements of rurality and the geography of Devon as exceptional.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think that's fine, and I don't think we should be too prescriptive at this stage about numbers, quite frankly, because, because again, and also, I noticed, I mean, it may have been that I missed out on it, that that one of the things that wasn't put in about time taken up, and that is if you represent a rural division, you have a number, probably, I think the average is about twelve town and parish councils, which you visit every month, and it takes time to travel to those as well. So I'm not sure if that was part of the, you know, the timetable or the, what you expect councillors to fulfil. Anyway, just, I'm happy, I'm happy to accept that proposal into the, into the recommendations. Just a sort of minor, to change the recommendation as well, and that's on part B. So where it says, note the views of the full council, we can change that to consider. I think that what we've shown here today is that absolutely we listen to the full council, and on many occasions, we agree with the full council and have made adjustments to our proposal as a result. So I, I hope that, I hope that other members of the council feel that they have been listened to and and it's been taken into effect. And finally, I'd just like to say a final thing. I think for councillors and indeed for officers, it has not been an easy time with with local government reorganisation. We have been pitted against each other, and inevitably, that has caused some tension, although I think Paul was right to say that that has not spilled over into open warfare in Devon, and that's a credit to our officers and indeed councillors. But I think one thing is, is that as we move forward, that we should also accept that there will be fantastic opportunities to deliver services that really reflect what are the wants and needs of our communities. And that is an opportunity that we would give up, it would be remiss of us not to take that. So, you know, people know that I'm not a great fan of this particular process that we have been forced to do. But when we get over it all, I am convinced with the officers and councillors that we have in Devon that we can produce services which will reflect what we want to do for our communities. So there is, there is this element of positivity about it, that in the end, I'm sure that we will be able to do better, and that's what we strive to do and should always strive to do. So, and thank you once again, Paul, for all your input. I'd just say, so I'll move the recommendations with that extra one, put in that change of word at one point one, so note to consider, and then an extra C in the final paragraph of recommendations. So I will, I'll move those proposals. So, yeah. Yeah. Was, is there anything else that anyone else would like to add at this stage? No, I mean, I'm just gonna, yeah, I'd need someone to second it. So Richard, you happy to second it? So it's happened, having second those recommendations. So is there anyone else who wants to add to the debate or to raise any points? Or are we happy that we've said our piece now? Dan, and then I'll come to you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Leader. Having not spoken before now, I'd just like to make it clear that although I am a twin hatter, I'm very clear as to what my responsibility is while I'm sitting here. I'm a county councillor. I am working in the best interests of the people of Devon. And as such, I am very happy to support this plan. I do so by echoing your remarks, though, about funding. I have real worries around the funding of local government. And that unless that is properly considered, this becomes an exercise in debt share rearrangement. And I very much hope that isn't going to be the case. And so my message to government is we are very happy to follow the rules and put in bids that we think work best for the people of Devon. But in return, you should be thinking about how you fund local government effectively in future for us. Other than that, Leader, I'm very happy to support the recommendations.
Just aware that there wasn't any mention of public health in any of the discussions, so I just wanted to add a little bit. So we know the building blocks of health and wellbeing, such as housing, education and public transport, sit within county and districts. Bringing these functions together under a single authority means that we'll be able to put back in place some of these building blocks missing in many of our communities and families within Devon. Doing this will enable us to tackle some of the inequalities which exist within Devon and improve outcomes for those most disadvantaged. There will be no disaggregation of the current public health services, such as public health nursing service, rated good by CQC, sexual health services and drug and alcohol service. This means we retain the ability to deliver high quality, effective and resilient services achieved only through the provision of services at scale. There will be no disruption to the current public health workforce, meaning we retain the capacity, resilience and expertise best achieved through larger public health teams. Bringing together key regulatory services such as environmental health, licensing, emergency planning and trading standards to work closely with public health will enhance public protection in Devon. This will mean we will be able to share data and intelligence more easily, have a single front door and ensure a single agency and have a more coordinated and resilient response to incidents within Devon. So I think that's something that needs to be added to this new Devon and the view that that larger scale will work better in terms of public health and the worry that if that was disaggregated, what that would mean for our communities.
No, thank you, Cheryl. And, you know, it's all very important and public health, absolutely. Right, I don't know if officers wanted to add anything or probably exhausted. But thank you again. So in which case, there's no other input from anyone. So it's been proposed by myself, seconded by Richard. Can I show a handful in favour of the recommendations as they stand, please? And any abstentions? That's cool. Thank you all very much. And that, I think, is that. So thank you all for being here and I will now formally close the meeting.